We received an information that last August 10 o'clock in the morning, there was an incident happened near Atiyat Yan along New May Island. Walang posti pero naaghihapon ang ilang katungong siminto. So, that incident should... The CTMS will be aware on that. And we need your support that this electric bus must be relocated or must be removed just for the safety of the motorists as well as the pedestrians. And we have another concern, Honorable Chair, regarding the traffic violations. We have here my two colleagues, Jim Rabbago, my assistant, CTMS, and one is my operation officer, Daniel Dr.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Mayong hapon sa tanan. Isa lang po sa, ma'am, Madam Chair, regarding po dito sa may color room, about sa color room, we have observed na... Naatay mga motorista from other municipalities or cities na musulot sa atuang, sa atuang syudad. Dayo ng atong ordinancea is sa revenue 159-13. Or pila ang iyahang amount para sa inahanap pag makaaprehenta, but sa ordinancea na among nabasa, wala siya'y provision, Madam Chair, una nga, kinahalag po namo sa inyo sa tabang para po ma-specific na'to kung unsagot ang provision about color room regarding sa mga motorista na musulot dire sa atong syudad. Ikaduha ka ng atong... Sa impos po sa... Ordinance or wala po kita'y ordinancea any regarding sa kuwan sa kaning mo-parking sa mga establishment or commercial, commercial, commercial establishment. So wala kita'y, wala tayong isagaw ordinancea na nga kung mo-ticket bataan na on sa mga provision paraan na nga kuwan, paraan na nga penalties. Ikatulo na atay wellness park na ay mag overnight parkings. So, mayong tabang na para sa, on sa atong mahimo na para sa penalties ano.
Madam Chair, there's an additional for the, for the CTMS. This is in regards with the no parking. Usually, as I observe, that business establishment, they are putting up no parking that is intended only for their delivery trucks whatsoever. We need your support so that we can implement the... We can implement what is usually the traffic because this is a public place. Private property. Hindi to sa ilaha. Pero, sigunsa akong ingonin na, what I'm saying before, that we need your support so that we can implement properly. That's all, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Sir Ampo. Any other... Manifestation?
May I respond, Honorable Chair?
Yes, Honorable Majority Leader, Rabul Tapayan, please.
Oh, thank you, Honorable Chair. Regarding the motorcycles entering the UAR of San City, whereby our existing ordinance on... That matter, the old ordinance captured last 2013 yet. Need to abide in a particular arrangement. I think that was discussed during the public hearing in the enactment of the first ordinance, traffic ordinance, parking sa mga motorcycles na is sponsored by Oliver Asier Romero, the parking places for motorcycles, motorcabs, carrying passengers in and out of San City. We'll try to review that ordinance in relation to that concern both before the sauce body now. And we'll try to see what amendment we could bring about on that ordinance. Only concern about the... The traffic, no, I mean, the no parking.
These establishments usually have their own no parking. This is a side of the road which is of government property.
No parking sign being put up by servicemen along the road. I think we already had a public hearing on that matter related to our ordinance introduced, the traffic code on traffic lights ordinance. However, we passed that proceeding and we have public hearing that that issue was being touched during public hearing. I think I was the one who attended the public hearings. We tried to enjoy the owners of service management businesses not to put up that sign because the road is a public property. Not a public property, so nobody can put up signs on the road. Only the government, like the NGO, could put up signs like that in accordance with our existing ordinance. But we'll try to again revisit that because, as you know, our traffic ordinance was already being preceded and it was not yet passed on second reading because after the public hearing, there are several concerns to amend its ordinance. Also from the CTMS office, there are certain provisions which need to be amended. And the mayor is frequently instructed the legal officer to review this ordinance. That's why up to now, we did not pass ordinance second reading. After the CTMS office will be able to endorse the proper amendments to this ordinance, it will be endorsed to us. Happy enough if there are new provisions not touched during a public hearing, we'll again conduct public hearing again to inform public about the changes of this traffic ordinance and recent our traffic lights. Because you would, you are aware that we are now... These traffic lights is new to the residents. And we have already installed the second phase of traffic lights. I'm not familiar with this third phase, no. But I can say that there are now many traffic lights embedded in the areas. At least in towards Osamis, ibutang ang traffic lights basa makita nga angayan kay naima accidenting tabo tungod kay wala'y traffic lights sa mga lugar. So, we are waiting for the final version of the ordinance which will include the concerns heard by similar residents to the office of CTMS and it will be subject to revision by our city legal officer. And then it will be endorsed again to us for review and proposal. And we'll have to conduct another public hearing. And we'll invite you, sir, at that time, including your important men, CTMS, so that you also provide inputs to us, to guide us in our final crafting of the ordinance, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Majority Leader. I hope that was taken note by Sir Ampo.
Noted for that, Honorable Chair. But I have still a concern about the CTMS. This is income generating. This is my plan. But before that, because when I was installed again last nine, ah, last August 9 by the mayor as the CTMS head, and I, when I inspected, when I inspected at the main office at the public market, I saw several unfit tickets. Unfit tickets? Isa kakahon?
Siyan?
Unfit tickets na violations of, the traffic violations na hindi nabayaran. Eo na, ang, ang plano ko, this is my plan for income generating. I consulted with LTO. And this is what also I have learned in some cities when I have been assigned formally when I was the, when I was the... Although these people will be, will pay or pay their violations, they will not, there should be an agreement or mowa between the LGO and the LTO. So ang nakasulot sa agreement is this. Before they receive, ang motor di ba restore? Ang license di ba restore again, restore na siya? So this is the agreement. Before they registered, before they receive for registration, they have to be first cleared at the office of the CTMS. If there will be, if there will be a violation, they have to pay first before, before registering their vehicles at LTO. So, but ipasabot. 100, example lang ah, 100 violations, 100 pesos lang ang violations. If they will not pay, because in the citation tickets, there's an, there's an statement there that you have to pay 3D's upon receipt of the citation tickets. If he will refuse again, or he will not pay on that particular date, that amount of 100 should be, have a surcharge of 20%.
Kung abot ng isang buwan na, is abot ng isang taon, kung abot na ako sa katweng, so pila na, maabot mo ng 2,000. So, ang vehicle niya na ay restore SLYO, di lima restore unless kung hindi sila makabayad sa CTMS sa violation nila. That is my plan. So you give me support because this is not only for the, for the, as a... What we call this income generating, but this is to discipline the owner of the motorcycle, especially driving with vehicle. And I recommend to the Yogosbody that driving with vehicle, the operators, the, the... The license of, of that vehicle should be revoked. And that's, that's what I, what I suggest and maybe give me support and I will do that.
Okay.
Okay, may I respond again?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Majority Leader. Yes, Honorable Majority Leader.
Honorable Sir Sergio Ampung, that matter about the penalty imposed by you, 100 pesos and the agreement with the LTO, I remember that, I can remember that it's also being discussed during public hearing. In fact, the good officer of the LTO, Ma'am Salomina Baro, is around, was around. And he recommended that, she recommended that there should be a mowa between LTO and the NGO. So that when this motor owner or driver of vehicle committed an impact on law, it can be reported to LTO. And LTO can acknowledge the report and it will be a resent in the application of the suspension for renewal office UAR sa iyang vehicle. Kaya na may report ang IDO sa LTO and I violation walang bayre. So, I don't think the mowa was already being made as of now. I don't know with the legal officer. But I recommend that the office will compare with our legal officer because our lawyer, especially Attorney Pasulita, already de-structured for the mayor regarding the ordinance of the mowa being cited during public hearing between LTO and the NGO. So, I now recommend the office to coordinate with Attorney Pasulita for any other concerns sa ordinance and other matters para ma-incorporate sa atong ordinance to be endorsed to us by the CTMS office later on.
Noted for that, Honorable Chair.
Yeah, Honorable Sweso, you have, you have the floor now.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
I'd just like to make clarifications regarding the next one. First, under to the safety, the public safety of the motorists right when, when happen to take place for the incident at Atiyat Yan, kaya na ang postis sa Walset.
Honorable Chair. Walang ay postis, pero na ay ang siminto ng postis. And that is very, that is, it is not only to the safety, but the construction itself.
And the company belongs to Walset?
Yes.
And we are requesting then if possible, we could help it remove?
If possible, as soon as possible. This construction should be removed so that it can cause, what's it say, destruction and... And what we, what we are mandating is, mandate is to ensure the safety of the motorists and pedestrians.
Okay, so probably we could request the mayor and the Madam Chair that we could at least communicate with us regarding that concern. Another concern, Madam Chair, is there... Let me know, sir, kung naingalulutin ng mga motorists, kaya ng mga public motorists sa kuwan, kaya kani gusto na kung ano, kaya ano to, fees, kaya nasusunod sila giling na transportation may crime. I understand, Honorable, munguna nun si Galak at ang galing niya before sa kuwan, chap pointe. Anakong sila, manakay, kapod sila, dito, lang, kaya mo sila, o wala na wala na?
Wala na, wala na, Madam Chair. Ah, sir, ay. Ah, na atay mga, kuwan na sir, na atay mga experience sir sa atong, sa traffic enforcer na mag-impost ako, kuwan sir, impost ang operating auto line, pero sa atong ordinance sa simula ang specific sir.
Okay. I have mentioned on the revenue code 159-13.
13, sir.
Na, na, kung ano ito, wala, na penalty na kahay.
Yes, sir.
Deyo, sorry, na, sa, wala. Okay, so, kung na, pinatay na, kapatid na sa, on the revenue code?
400, I think sir, 400 or 500, sir.
400, correct.
400, sir.
Kaya, before we are going to 102, ingonin ka, lalo silang, pa, payment of fees, they need to have a public hearing regarding that and a amendment kaya sa ordinancea kung nasusunod sila, or else we have to do pa, tama na sila sa tabo, deyo, anakong pasiro, ano na, kung saan galing.
Ah, iikon na, sir. Iclear ka, iclear ka sa ordinancea, sir. Kung pwede ba maniget ang traffic enforcer, operating auto line na sa atong ordinancea simula, naka-specific, sir. So, may ikon mo na atong enforcer, sir, kaming sa CTMS ko, maniget na, wala tayong, kuwan sir, wala tayong, example, mapabilis na.
But derye, derye, for to maniget, kaya sa, the public hearing na to sa, sa ordinance, amendment pa.
Yes, sir.
So probably we could, we could help you at least introduce to us an ordinance sa elemente, para ato lang, stretch for the public hearing. Another concern, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Parking, wellness park, gusto na, mag overnight parkings na.
Yes, private.
Naagay mag park ng...
Yes, private, kuwan sir, lalo na, sir, sa, 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 na...
Sir, okay, binigyan kani, kapi, garyo, ang tali ito magpaabot sa March, bilin sa Wellness Park?
Ano ang ipan, sir, nagkiligilin ka, sa fourth row, sir.
Okay, di ako, di manood teresa, may kinalakap, kiliti, na, pero, sir, is my, bilin ito, mga lanta, o parking fees, pero, over night? Probably we have the idea, basi ng paabot na sila.
Lalo na, sir, lalo na, sir, lalo na, lalabili, ibigin na siya, pagtatabi na siya, balikan.
Ah, okay, so probably.
Kung sa, sir, mga, imrihan na, lalagat din siya, sir, talubis ako, sir, sir, magtrabaho na sa area na municipality or sa tagob, sir, mga lalabili na sa, 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 sir.
Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Sweso, ni Adolfo Luis Tizelli, yes, or my teacher. Honorable Chair, please, go forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kuwan, Madam Chair, kani, kani musulot nga, dipaseroan sa Osamis na bihisa, example, kare. Dayo, musulot siya sa Osamis, nga dipaseroan nila, kung to, pick up sila, nato, opasiro sa within our UAR. So, derye, base pa, pwede na to, sila, mapikitang, dayo, sa, walang sila franchise. Sa atuang, na require ng tao franchise sa ato city, na pwede ka maopasiro. Hanggang yung ipumpitap, dipasiro, kaya sa Osami City, within Osami City. So, binigyan, wala sa, wala siya, wala siya, wala siya franchise sa Osami. So pwede ka matikim, siguro, derye, base pa. Kaya, ako, derye, mapikitang, dayo, sa legal sa una, na, ato, the violations of traffic, so, dayo, wala ng kasulot sila, local ordinance. So siguro, na atay local ordinance, diwa, may, kasulot, so makatikim, kitang. Iclay, ma'am, Honorable Sweso. May, sa, city, all motorcabs kare, may, sir, siyakap, franchise, ato, is, color room. So, kung walang franchise, legal, ang, ato. And because motorcabs, atsak, sakte, like, example, kare, atsak, franchise, kare, within the franchise, wala sa, wala sa franchise. So, di bigat, bigat, apantin, kare, franchise. So, wala sa franchise, wala sa power, wala na, ito, bigat, bigat, sasagay, wala sa franchise, so, di bigat, pati kitang, legal. Wala sa color room, although, kare, legal, kare, but, kiti, who is, sa, city, wala sa franchise, di bigat, legal, operators, wala sa franchise, so, di bigat, franchise, sa, city, so. So, binigyan, kitang, cato, tayong, na, bro, pati kitang, cuto, pa, na, allow na, kare, ito, may franchise. Walang franchise, color room, kitang, may, bro, franchise, atsak, sasagay, itnis, wala sa franchise, sa, city, pati kitang, kare. I hope I, I put was.
Yes, Honorable, ito, na, kare.
Uh, question na, sa, Majority Leader, Madam Chair, kara, example, lako ang pamilya sa Klare, dayo, wala tayong lahat, o muna, transparencia, nato na, di, afro, dipaseroan ng motor na, na franchise sa kati. Dayo, ang tali, tato, pasirte, sa, ato, pamilya, ang tali, sa, iyo, kasi. So, ni, sulod, sa, Osamis, pero, wala, dipaseroan, so, sa, Osamis, wala franchise, sa, Osamis, pero, ang, kada, pasirte, ang, pamilya. Ame, ay, ito, kitang.
The answer, the, kare.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
That's, kare, ito, video, but, sa, city, di, kare, maopasiro, is, kare. Walang, maopasiro. So, imo, bigyan, kare, rest, kare, kaya, kare, kare. Kaya, kare, kare, wala, imong, asawa, o, inakwa, na, Madam Chair, kare, rest, kare. Kiyari, imong, skenan, kare. Itulan, imong, sa, iyo, si, sabo, imong, kore, kare. That is, a, example, na, itinatipay, iti, sa, opasiro. Wala, ame, but, kare, sa, bigo, sa, kare. Pay, pay, pay. I am, kare, kare. Derye, kare. Eh, na, papa, papa, kita, sa, this, state, this, family, na, wala, maopasiro. Eh, kung, wala, kare, si, tao, sa, ato, CTMS, mga, tao, malangan siya, may, kore, kare. Malangan siya, eh, kano, kare, kare. Na, wala, kare, kare. So, para... In a, has, in a resent, buta na, private, sa, karanan. Para, isang, marang, private man, di, na, na, maopasiro. So, okay na, yan na.
Okay, any other manifestation, yes, from the traffic, would that be okay? The suggestion, I mean, the manifestation of Honorable Tapayan, just in case you'll get in in Osamis, musulot ka sa Osamis, you don't have the franchise, you may just put private, okay? Uh, yes, or?
Okay, ma'am, okay, Madam Chair, noted po.
Okay, yes, Honorable, separate din, Honorable Co.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ano lang ko i-share regarding po, dana in connection sa question ni Consihal Archie o sa manifestation ni Attorney Marsilian Tapayan. Ah, sa unang magong panahon, Madam Chair, naagud tay mo rag parking dinhe sa Klareen. Kaya, ang taga-Klareen, pwidi sila makakuha o franchise sa Osamis o Klareen. Sumo-onang, they are allowed to ka ng kuha o pasiro dinhe sa, sa Osami City. But since katung naatay one time na kumitihiring sa atuan ng administration, ninghangiyo'to ang ilahang presidente, si Sir Jorlan Muralion, na ang Klareen baliko'to bragad sila sa boundary, kaya daghan manggutpong taga-Osamis na gusto mo kuha franchise, but tungod kay limit rasia. So, mo'tong, ah... Mura, mo'ti yang girequest na dili ang taga-Klareen iskuto bragad sa Klareen. But I don't know, na implement bagay to siya ang iyahang request dire sa atuang ah, sa City Treasures, kaya dinha man na sila maglukat. So, moorapod na, na, some na taga-Klareen, pwidi sila mo pasahero dinhe as long as they have their franchise dire sa Osamis. So, maalam po na siya akong ika-share, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable, separate of your manifestation. Next is Honorable Co.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'd just like to clarify with Sir Ampung. Ganina, you mentioned something about private property used as parking area. Is that also one of your concerns sa parking area where these private property owners put up no sign, no parking sign sa ilang private, whether you can issue ticket on parking violation or not? Sa, appeal ba ni si mo concerns?
No, it's not my concern, ma'am. It is only, my concern is especially business establishments. They're putting up in front of these businesses, no parking, which is a violation of the traffic code. So, private property, yaman na, well, ito, we, lalo na. But, as long as it not distract or obstruct the traffic law. Kaya, kung maka-obstruct siya, lampa siya, that's violation already.
Thank you, thank you, no more questions, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Co. Thank you, Sir Ampung. Any other manifestation for some clarification from this Honorable Body? Napatay daghang, ipangutana to our traffic officer? Yes, Honorable Sweso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Additional lang ako, kuwan, Madam Chair, ka ng query is that if we will be allowing Klareen motorists to enter our premises upon securing a franchise, warag, warag, usas sa mga requirements na makakuha ng franchise sa imo motor is dapat butante ka sa Osamis. So, maybe we could have a problem with that. I don't know how are we going to arrange with that. Pero, ang importante is, if they are willing to have a franchise, warag duha ilang franchise, they can enter Osami City, maybe we could make an accommodation to that. Pero, kung dili, maybe, atong ibalik na lang yuto nga, ang taga-Klareen, tama na dito sa may lapasan area.